All right, that's the end of that. And now no longer the chair. Priscilla, you're in charge. Yeah, we got three more minutes. Okay, I'll take another slug of water. I'd like to bring the January 28th, 2021 regular meeting to order. I'd like to introduce the staff that we have here at this particular time. We have Mr. Bob Schwartz representing Bowling Green. We have Mr. Leanne Smith represents Reedy Church. We have Dr. Carol Horton who represents Port Royal. Priscilla Minor who represents Mattupanoy. And I'm George Weaver and I represent the Madison District. Before I continue, I would like to just do one simple thing. I was very neglectful at the special meeting that we had. I forgot to thank our chairperson, who has been Dr. Horton, took care of us all last year, and I can only hope that I can do as good a job as she did. So, 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 so thank you, Carol. I really have to say that. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I had to do that. Staff, we have Craig Pennington, planner. Lisa Zek, assistant director. Chris McKenzie, county attorney. He's via Zoom. And I would now like to do the pleasure of allegiance, if we may, please. The next motion would be to approve the minutes of November 18th, 2020. Has anybody read these over? Any objections? Hearing none, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the November 18th, 2020 minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. We shall now go on to the public hearings. Lisa Zek will read us the hearing protocols. Please, Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The purpose of a public hearing is for the Caroline County Planning Commission to listen carefully to the verbal expression of position and opinion from the citizens of Caroline County. Public hearings are not question and answer sessions or debates, and all statements should be addressed to the chair. When members of the public offer comment, they need to clearly state their name and address prior to making their comments. Applicants or representatives of the applicant will be allowed 15 minutes at a minimum, as determined by the planning commission, to introduce information regarding the matter advertised for public hearing. Persons speaking at public hearings are respectfully requested to keep comments brief, not to exceed three minutes, and to address only those issues pertinent to the matters advertised for public hearing. After the public hearing is closed, the applicant or representatives of the applicant will be allowed 10 minutes to address any issues identified by the public.
Thank you, Lisa. May I have the staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your only public hearing tonight is SPEX 10-2019. And the applicant's requesting approval of a special exception permit for used auto sales on Tax Map Parcel 26-A-30. You may remember this case that came before you last year with the rezoning. The rezoning was approved at the December 8th, 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting, and so now the applicant is back with a special exception permit now that the rezoning's been accomplished. The VDOT had the only comment on an entrance which is in Spotsylvania County, and so it's not applicable to the Caroline site. There were no other comments after that. The comprehensive plan shows this area to remain rural outside of Caroline County, so the project's not consistent with 2030 comprehensive plan. However, the rezoning was accomplished in December to change the property to commercial. Staff offered some conditions for the approval of special exceptions. First condition is the two wits shall be recorded in Circuit Court of Caroline County. All vehicles, whether display or employee, shall be parked in the designated parking spaces shown on the GDP and shall be limited to nine vehicles. The GDP depicts nine spaces, and so therefore we are allowing nine vehicles to be parked in those spaces for sale or employed. Third condition is no inoperable vehicle shall be parked on the parcel. Fourth condition, no vehicles used for repair parts may be kept on the property. Five, any lighting source shall, any lighting shall be source shielded and downward facing and not exceed .5 foot candles at the property lines. No land of servants shall be permitted except to the extent necessary to install drainfields or wells for use on the property. Any containers of new or used fluids and parts that have been replaced shall be stored inside of a structure and disposed of properly. And the county boundary line shall be staked in multiple places so as to readily identify the boundary for administration enforcement purposes.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Sir, these are suggested conditions. They have no enforcement behind them, no force of effect, shall we say. If these conditions are violated, there's nothing to say that they get a smack on the hand, or what's the recourse?
So, right now, they're suggested conditions. When you vote on it, you may choose to include more conditions or exclude conditions that we suggested. Once they are, once the project was approved by the Board of Supervisors, then these conditions would be enforced with a violation, violating the conditions of the special exception permit. And if special exception permit is violated, then the board can call a public hearing to revoke the special exception permit.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Which, if I can clarify that last statement real quick. Which, the board revoking the permit is not the first course of action. We write violations first, and if they're addressed and taken care of in a timely manner, the board will be informed of it. But that's not the first course of action to revoke the permit. That's if continuous violations happen.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So, based on this, Greg, there are nine spaces within the Caroline County, within the boundary of Caroline County?
That is correct.
We, how are we supposed to monitor this? I mean, do we, do we send somebody out every day and say, well, there's more than nine? There's now 11? I mean, I'm just asking.
It'd be like any other situation with a zoning violation. It'd be complaint-based. And so if we happen to be in the area, we'll take a look, but most of the violations are from a complaint coming in from a call from a citizen.
Is that the only, the only thing would be if we happened to be in the area at the time? Then we'd be able to cite them for a violation. Other than that, anything could be happening there.
That's correct. If we were, if one of our employees drove by the site, noticed a violation, then we would start the paperwork in the office and contacting the applicant. If nobody was in that area for a certain number of weeks, then it would be complaint, complaint-based.
And, Mr. Weaver, I might add that that's not specific to this application. That's, that's the county's policy for zoning enforcement generally. It's complaint-based.
It's only on a complaint basis. Well, Chris, the only reason I'm asking is because this is such an odd situation that, of course, we have no access from the main road into the Caroline County property. So we have to first go into the Spotsylvania County property to get into this piece of land to park the cars. So I'm just trying to, trying to understand, if nobody goes by to complain about this, then almost anything can happen on the site. Am I correct, sir?
Yes, you are correct. However, there is at least one employee that drives by the site every day regularly.
Well, just so the, just so the operators of this facility understand, I'm only three quarters of mile away from this site. So believe me, just hope it's understood, that I will drive by there at least every other day. So, is that okay to say, Chris?
Sure. I mean, we, the county operates a complaint-based system, and you, like every other citizen, is certainly entitled to file a complaint.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Weaver, if it makes you feel any better, I drive by the site on my way to work and home from work every single day.
I do know where you live, and yet, and yet, yes, we're both going to go by there quite often. Any other, any other question from, from PC? No? Okay. I'd like to open this public hearing this particular time. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Either for or against?
Mr. Weaver, you may want to invite the applicant up if he has any presentation at all or anything I can say before you open the hearing.
Please, applicant, just understand, this is the first time I sat in this position with this gavel, so I'm going to make a few errors here and there.
Well, I hope I don't make you have to use the gavel, so we'll go from there. My name is Stephen Judy. I'm an attorney. My address is 9010 Old Battlefield Boulevard, Suite 102 in Spotsylvania, Virginia. I'm here representing the applicant. Is it okay with you if I take my mask off?
Yeah, as long as you're six feet away from people, you can take your mask off.
I will try to stay six feet away. As Mr. Pennington said, we were before you last year. I think we started this sometime in May of last year, came before you twice. As we had indicated, we, we sort of came upon this whole circumstance accidentally, and my clients were not aware when they purchased the property that it was divided by the county line between Spotsylvania and Caroline. And they started the permitting process in Spotsylvania because the Spotsylvania side of it was already properly zoned for this type of business. And it was a by right use, and not until the planning department came out and saw what was going on where they made aware that they had this issue. So what we've come down to, in order to make use of nine parking spaces on the Caroline side of this property, plus the use of, there's a small building on the Caroline side, too, that they would like to repair and use for sort of a shelter for doing detailing on cars, which basically washing and cleaning and fixing any minor issues with the car. We're not turning it into a repair shop. It's just to detail the cars for sale. So, so really, what we're, we've gone through the rezoning, now obtaining the special exception just so we can park nine cars on that side of the property and hopefully make use of the building. As Mr. Pennington said, we are willing to comply with the conditions that he outlined to you. The one regarding marking the property was sort of thrown upon us at the last moment. We didn't realize what they were doing, but, you know, that, that can be complied with fairly easily. There's no issue with that. One thing I do want to clarify is that when they do repair this building and make use of it, there is the potential down the road to renovate the building. And when I say renovate, I mean to fix it up so that it can be more than just a shelter. It can actually be a building where they can have a facility for employees to be in, which may require that they install a bathroom facility and sink and water. And in order to do that, they would have to put in a septic field and well because the only septic and well on the property right now is on the Spotsylvania side. So that's why we've indicated with the rezoning and also with special use permit or special use, special exception, that we would not disturb any more than necessary regarding the existing footprint of the building, and then whatever would be necessary to install a, a drain field and well to serve that property if that has to occur later in, in time. Also with regard, if right now there are nine spaces available on that side, my clients realize that if any time they chose to expand that use, in other words, to add more parking spaces on that side, that they would have to go through this process all over again, that they'd have to produce a new site plan and, and convince you that there is a reason why they could add more parking spaces to it. One of the things that was clearly brought up in the meetings with the Board of Supervisors was this concern over the potential of there being inoperable vehicles or parts vehicles on the property. As I stated earlier, we're not intending that this be a repair facility or, or a mechanic shop. There will not be any fixing of cars or replacing parts or things of that nature. There'll be no work other than the potential of maybe adding some oil to a car, adding washer fluid to the, and changing wiper blades or small things like that just to get a car in its best shape to sell it to the public. So there will not be junk cars on the property. The Division of Motor Vehicles requires that cars on a, a used car lot or a new car lot be inspected. So there will not be any cars on this lot that have not been inspected. If for some reason a car is brought to the facility and it does not have an inspection from it, it will have to be taken elsewhere to be inspected because they won't have an inspection facility there. So it will not stay on that property if it's not inspected. It will go elsewhere and will not be brought back until it is inspected. There will not be any junk cars on the property at any time. Certainly, Mr. Weber, you, you spoke about going by and checking up on them. This sort of begs the question, if we do this to all other businesses who apply for special exception permits, I'm not sure why this one is being singled out in that sense that the assumption is that they have a special use permit and they know what the conditions are, they're going to abide by them. And otherwise, they wouldn't be here making this effort and exhausting the time and cost to, to go through this process. So I want to assure you that they're going to do everything they can to comply.
And I appreciate that comment, okay? And again, I'm not picking on these people at all. I'm just basically in a position where it's one of those places that I go by every day. And when I said that, I wasn't accusing them of doing anything wrong.
I understand.
I just, I guess my situation is to protect the general public of Caroline County, and that is what I'm supposed to be doing. And the board members that are here, that's what we try and do on a regular basis. So if it happened to be something over by Dr. Horton's house, she would drive by and say, oh, they're doing a nice job. I'm not picking on these people at all. I just want to make sure that they understand, if they see me go by, I'm not deliberately going by to just see them, all right? Just so you understand it.
Understood.
Thank you.
All right. Answer any questions?
Any questions, guys?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Judy.
Good evening, sir.
I do not know your client. I don't know if he has any other dealerships in the area or not. I think I share some of the concerns that our chairman has as well, and that is based upon frequently traveling Route 1 going to Fredericksburg. And as you get into Spotsylvania County, there are several car dealerships along the path. There is one in particular that looks more like an automotive graveyard than a car dealership. And we don't want that popping up in Caroline. What Spotsy does, that's up to them. I don't know what their rules and regs and conditions are, but there is, like I say, one in particular that looks like an eyesore, to say the least.
And I, and I understand that, sir, and, and Spotsylvania has rules and regulations more stringent than Spots, than Caroline does to try to prevent that from occurring. I, I don't know the specific one you're talking about, but unfortunately, there are sites in Spotsylvania that have been grandfathered over time and limited in what can be done to correct the errors that have occurred in the past. But we certainly want to assure you that we have no intention of allowing this site to become something of that nature.
I appreciate that. And the building that you're speaking of, my understanding, not only from what you're saying now, but historically, what has been presented to us in the past, is that this would be used for in-house vehicle repair to prep a vehicle for sale, that the general public that needs an automobile repaired, that brings it into the mechanic, the vehicle would not be taken to this building.
No, sir. There, there would be no public repair available at this site. It's, it's only for the cars that are being prepped to be put on the lot for sale.
And perhaps, I don't know whether you can answer this or not, but how are we going to determine where the line is? What's on Caroline, what's on Spotsy?
Well, that, that was the last condition that was placed on us was that we somehow put up multiple markers that they can put a tape on so that they can run a line across to see how many cars we've parked on the Caroline side versus the Spotsylvania side.
Right, and certainly if you come up and somebody sees, well, there are 10 vehicles over there, you know, I don't see anybody getting their head chopped off for that, but...
I would certainly hope not, but I, I would assume that somebody would say, hey, you have too many cars on that side, move them over to the Spotsylvania side.
Right.
And that's, that's what they would do. Of course, they have limitations on the Spotsylvania side, too. So if, if they exceeded the number of vehicles allowed, they would have to remove it from the lot and take it to another location. You, you would ask, they do have another facility in Spotsylvania up on Harrison Road that they've operated for several years.
Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate you.
You're going to have nine vehicles at a time on you.
I, I'm still not hearing you.
Can you hear me?
Just barely.
From what I'm hearing, you're saying you're going to have nine vehicles on, on the property?
What, what we are saying is that on the Caroline side, and what this special exception permit is all about, is that we have nine available parking spaces, because one of the conditions is the cars have to be parked within a, a designated space. We have nine spaces on the Caroline side, which means we can only park nine cars in those spaces. I would assume that if we do open up the building for doing the prep work, that a, a car inside the building would not count toward that, that nine.
My next question is, how old are cars are they going to be dealing with? How old are the cars you're going to be dealing with?
I, I think that's, that's hard to determine, because in the used car market, it can vary from one year old to, to ten years old. It's more about the condition of the car than it is the age. I drive a thirteen-year-old car that's in perfect condition. And I, if I put it on a used car lot, it would be a nice car to have, because I take care of it. So, I, I think it's a question of, of the condition of the car, more so than its age. One thing that we talked about before, used car dealers are not the same as they used to be, although there are some who just try to cram as many cars on the lot as they can. But nowadays, you know, people come to a car dealer and describe the type of car, the age of the car, the price they want to pay, and the dealers will then shop the markets, which are the, the auto auctions and other places, like the auto auction up in Stafford, and find the car that they're looking for. So, there isn't so much a need to have a huge inventory on the lot as there is to, to be able to go out and find the cars. So, they're not going to put cars on their lot that are aged out or in poor mechanical condition, because they're just going to sit there, and there's just not enough room on this property to have that kind of facility. So, we're not going to have old, what do they call them, beater cars, sitting on this property. Most of them will be late model, probably in the neighborhood of five to six years old at the most, but there will, I assume there will be occasionally some that are slightly older.
The reason I'm asking the question is because if you get older cars, they require a lot of maintenance. Because, the reason I'm asking the question is because if you get older cars, it requires a lot of maintenance. So, that maintenance is going to be all the time. And if you're going to be trying to sell these vehicles, they'd be in and out all the time from there.
And again, we're, we're talking used cars, and used cars usually do not come with any kind of warranty. If they sell a warranty with a car, they're not selling that they're warranting the car and that they'll repair it there at the facility. Car warranties, if you know, the ones that advertise on TV, dealers can sell those warranties to you, but the, the repair work is done at a repair facility, not at the, the site where it was sold. And, and the dealer is not the one responsible for the warranty. These cars will be sold as is.
So, there'd be no warranty or nothing with it?
As I said, i- if it's a warranty, if you go to any of the major dealers, like Shee or Rosner, or any of those dealerships, they clearly state on the window of the car that the car is sold as is, and that the dealer provides no warranty. If you want a warranty, you have to purchase a private warranty through another company. And if you have work done on the car, you take it to another facility and you deal with the warranty company, not the dealer. You'd be hard-pressed to find a used car dealership that actually warrants their cars for more than thirty days.
Well, that's what I'm looking at. Generally, they sell a car, so I'll sell it to you, but a thirty-day warranty, you'll bring it back to me.
If, if during the thirty days, something would happen to the car, and I'm not, again, I don't, this, on most cars, it will say, as is, no warranty provided, but if they do provide a, a short thirty-day warranty, I assume it's a, if it, something goes wrong with it, bring it back and we'll give you another car, and we'll take this one and get it fixed.
Well...
But not fixed at that site.
Well, I'm being honest with you, because I believe if you go mess around with a lot of old cars, they're really a bunch of junk.
Well, I think, I think my clients know that, and they don't want to mess around with a bunch of cars that they're going to have to deal with people bringing them back because they don't work. They're only going to be selling cars that, that have been checked out and, and are mechanically sound.
Okay, thank you.
It, it doesn't do a dealer any good to, to sell a piece of junk.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I've got a question for Greg. Greg, saying five years down the road, and another company come in this facility, they're going to have the same special...
Uh, the, the, the non-transferable condition that we put on some special exceptions wasn't on this. So, if they were to sell to another car dealership, then this could be used for the new car dealership. In the past, if you didn't want it to be able to transfer to a new entity, then you put the non-transferable condition on there, where if they sold to a new car dealership, then the car, that new car dealership would have to come in here to get a permit as well. As it's written right now, that's not a condition on there. It wasn't one of the suggested ones by staff.
Well, I, I think I can help answer that question. The special exception or special use runs with the property itself, not, not the, the owner of the property. So, if they transfer ownership of the dealership to someone else, and they're using the property for the same purpose, they fall under the same restrictions.
Okay, sorry. Is this our second one? Or in the county? Car dealership, uh... Oh, yeah, Bowling Green. But Bowling Green is, they have, they...
Bowling Green is in Bowling Green, it's not Caroline. The one in Port Royal is in Port Royal, not in Caroline. Uh, the only one I can...
Carmel Church, right?
Uh, well, that was, a special exception was permitted there, but the guy didn't ever opened yet.
Yeah.
He still has a year on his special exception to open before it expires. Winding Brook over, right across the street, they're permitted to sell twelve cars at a time.
So, this would be the second one?
Yeah.
Well, third one, if you count Carmel Church.
Right.
That hasn't expired, though, permit yet, right?
They have another year to commence, to commence operation. You also permitted one in the Dawn area, but that shop burnt down la- last year, and they were permitted to have fifteen cars, but they did not rebuild the shop or reopen.
Okay.
Any other questions of the applicant? PC, you're all done? I thank you so much, sir. Thank you. Appreciate the application. Is it now time for me to open up the public hearing? Is that, is it time now for me to...
Did we open the public hearing yet?
Yeah, yeah, you gotta do the public hearing.
I can open it now. I'd like to open a public hearing on this application. Does anyone here wish to speak either for or against this application? I ask again, is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this application? Last call, is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this application? Hearing none, close the public hearing. Any questions to the discussions, gentlemen? Ladies, more questions?
Well, I mean, it's in my district, a little piece of my district that goes over that way. I used to have more, but I think Gary took some. So, you know, I've been and looked at the property at least twice over the last several months, and I hadn't had any complaints from anybody in my district. So...
You can barely see it, Carol. I've gone by the complaining, you can barely see what's going on here.
So, um, you know, a- as far as I'm concerned, for myself and my constituents, it looks fine.
Anybody here wish to make a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that is contingent upon the suggested conditions, that the suggested conditions be made part and parcel to the recommendation for approval.
Okay.
So, are you making a motion?
I am making a motion. A special exemption request, uh... Ten dash twenty nineteen. For Rosa... Rosa Mushtag, and...
Potters.
And I hope I didn't butcher that too badly. I apologize if I did. Appears to be generally consistent with the goals and objectives. The comprehensive plan and future land use map, and whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants, the approval of this rec- request, I recommend that special exemption ten dash twenty nineteen be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval, as long as they include the special conditions.
With the special, with the suggested conditions.
I'm sorry?
With the suggested conditions.
Yes, with the conditions. Yes. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Does staff have anything else you want to add to this?
Chairman, we don't have any other business for this evening.
I need a motion to adjourn to the February twenty-fifth regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll see you guys in February twenty-fifth.